We'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would read the roll call.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Pace Snook, Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher, Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone and Mr. Braun.
Present.
Five council members present, three absent.
Thank you. And Pastor Bruce Williamson is here for your indication.
Let's pray together. Our Heavenly Father, we rejoice and thank you in such a beautiful fall day that you've given us. And Lord, to begin this meeting tonight, because it is this season, we want to remember the extra traffic that's on our roadways with the farmers in harvest, wide machinery and lots of trucks going back and forth to elevators. That affects the heart of Missouri and mid-Missouri, all of us. I pray for alertness and for safety of all the traveling public during this harvest season. The other is with so many outside activities with fall moving into winter, I lift up, Lord, all of those that commute daily and for those that will be transitioning, Lord, from summer work into winter services. And I pray for every community in our area and all of those, Lord, that will very soon begin to plan to work the streets in clement weather. And I pray that you'll keep our public safety officers, our police officers, firefighters, EMTs, and all of those who serve this city, keep them safe as fall transitions into winter. I lift up this session tonight and I pray, Lord, that you bless all of those that have come from the community to participate. I'm grateful for community participation. I pray for our mayor and council persons, our administrators and department heads, and all of those, Lord, who daily work for and lead the work of this city. I continue to pray for those that are part of the city family, and my list is not exhaustive, but I'll continue, Lord, to remember Chief Myers, Chief Kofelt, Mr. Moore, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and any others that are part of the city family who need your touch and blessing each day. We ask you to guide and direct the discussions that are held, those that have already been held, and we pray for this session tonight that you'll have the leadership and the approval of the work of our community. We pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Place the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Pastor. At this time, we'd entertain comments from visitors. We simply ask that you state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes. That would be Mr. Payne.
To start off, we'll ask you a question about the scout cabin. You have the material. It's in the Hamlin Education Book. It was built while Emmanuel Arch's class at Fulton High School shortly after World War II. They tried to build it before World War II. They purchased the land, but they leased the land to the CCC. That's how you got the amphitheater out there. That book also has the only picture I've found so far of the dome on the swimming pool. It also explains, it hints at the cooperation between the school district and the city when that was built, and that took about two minutes. Got a packet tonight from a small, that fort tree is still getting wood pulp. In that packet, some information I kind of thought through on the vault toilets, the carport shelter, the dog park. Gave you a suggestion of how to find a clerk. And then the Westminster pages has a photograph of Greasefield. You have Richard Alt, Coach Alt. Looks like he's about ready to swallow somebody in a headlock in the senior life-saving class. Also some pictures of the Westminster College swim team, some images of the Churchill speech you may or may not have seen before. There's also a page in there on Seminole College. The Seminole College is one of two colleges that was reinfected and did not survive. There's also a photograph of possible development plan for Westminster Colleges. A little bit different than what actually happened. Okay. Are we going to be able to get these on? There we go. Okay, some of you may recognize this picture. That's the old city hall. Most of you should recognize, the young council people aren't here. As Mr. Moore, fun times he had climbing up and down the steps and the fun people he worked with.
They were fun.
This gentleman liked Fulton so well that he came, he was college once, and he came back to the Westminster College. That's the building you're working in now. It's kind of unique. No, it's wobbly and stays warm in winter and cold in summer. That is not the Churchill memorial. It's just hiding in something. This is sort of your symbol for your town. And this is why I came out of my cave. This is the 100th year of Memorial Park down here, depending on when you start counting. Now, these people are, I have no idea. I think it's probably a little bit after the Spanish-American War, as they got trapped for the French Revolution. Other than that, I have no idea who they are. The reason I came out about Memorial Park is the Memorial Star down there. That's the name the city gave to the canyon. And by the way, it's not a canyon, it's a house. There's a difference. Talk to somebody that was in a house. There's nothing urgent. When that was put up, the cannon was lit, the flag was lit, and there was talk about developing an information sign down there explaining things like the pedestal for Liberty Bridge and Ms. McAtee saved, Mr. and Ms. McAtee, you know, flash flood and all the two city employees nearly puffed down the water. There's also the Memorial Star marker down there. Just little things, but you have an unlit flag down there, the major thing right now. The cannon can stay unlit for a while. When Par Five came in, it was decided that Par Five was putting out so much light that there was no point in doing the war.
Mr. Payne, you have one minute remaining.
And that's my little joke of the night. If you don't think you can see it, that that's the ongoing ammo control sign behind the subject sitting on the side of the building sidewalk. It's something that appears to be a house. And I'm throwing for the night.
Thank you. Looks a little bit like Thomas the Train.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
Doesn't it?
We'll do that one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. We appreciate the history lesson tonight.
Yes, I do.
That was great. Very good. If anyone else would care to speak to the council? Seeing no one come forward, we will move on. Looks like we got a couple of special people here. We're going to present a proclamation. Chief Myers, if you would, do our introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, probably most of you do not know, is this Mental Health Week. And what most people don't know is many of the people that we deal with have some sort of mental health crisis, but more often it's just a crisis intervention that we do as police officers. When it goes beyond that, then I think about five years ago, Laura came in my office and talked to me about her as a liaison. She actually works for the Author Center in Mexico, but she's a liaison for not only Callaway County, but how many, Laura, five, six other counties? Most of Missouri North and East. So she's, she's got a huge, huge job. And so when departments have a mental health crisis, they can call her and she will come and, and try to help the people, find them resources that they can, to go to, and at times find them a bed in a, in a mental facility someplace. She does an outstanding job. First time she came in my office, I thought maybe she was the one that needed mental health. But she kept coming back until she convinced me that certainly that was a good, good thing that we needed in Fulton. We were one of the first departments to train our officers in crisis intervention. I think Columbia and Jeff City, you might have saw on, on the TV where they got a lot more press out of it, but we were one of the first to do that, and it's all because of her. And I think, and I've said this before at, in public, that I think she's just an angel for us, because my officers, there's instances we don't, as police officers, know what to do exactly. She has trained our officers to where they could recognize situations that we need to call or, my detective, Crystal, is also a trainer, CIT trainer, and so she, we train all of our people in crisis intervention. I think it helps our department tremendously. And looking at from an administrative standpoint, it, it certainly protects us tremendously from lawsuits and things of that nature from not being trained. We, in the past, I've saw a lot of case law where departments have lost many, many cases because they came upon a person that was in crisis, and sometimes they've actually hurt them, and, and there is instances they've shot them because they didn't recognize that they were mentally ill or, or something of that nature. So, in that being said, I want to introduce Laura Heitman and Crystal Kent.
And you guys are, I hope we didn't steal all your thunder.
She didn't know what she was here for. I just had her show up. Which is now the second time I've done this to her this year. She also won CMHL of the Year throughout the state of Missouri, and on top of that, she was behavioral health practitioner, whatever the full title is, of international CIT as well. So she's recognized internationally and throughout the state. So I appreciate Fulton also recognizing her. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I think so, too.
I'm going to read this proclamation. Were you here? Whereas mental health is a key component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being, and mental health, mental illness affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, socioeconomic status, gender, and orientation. And whereas only 50% of individuals with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment due to feelings of personal shame, fear, fear, or social stigma, discrimination, and lack of support. And whereas stigma leads to fear, mistrust, lack of education, and violence toward those suffering from mental illness, and greater public awareness can positively transform attitudes, access to services, and support. And whereas the city of Fulton wishes to convey its sincerest gratitude for the assistance received by Laura Heitman, Community Mental Health Liaison, and to congratulate her on receiving both state and international recognitions as Community Mental Health Liaison for the year 2019. And whereas the knowledge, passion, dedication, and level of excellence displayed by Laura in the pursuit, pursuit of eradicating the stigma around mental health, mental illness is worthy of honor and recognition, and we thank her for the countless hours of assistance she provides to the Fulton Police Department. Now therefore, I allow Cannon Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of our community, hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Mental Health Awareness Week. And witness to thereof, my appearance set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Fulton, Missouri this eighth day of October 2019. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. There's always so many big words in those things. Okay, moving on, the consent agenda tonight. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the consent agenda. We have three items tonight. Approval of request for Margie Lechner on behalf of Westminster College for the Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 18th. Approval of a request from Janice Salmons for the Brick District for carriage rides to be held in conjunction with the Holiday Open House on Friday, November 8th, and the appointment of Christie Jackson to the Park Board.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Very good. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Very good. Thank you. Moving on to, we do not have unfinished business. There was a request that I got from the Callaway 2000 Organization that kind of just given us a heads up that they appreciated the $10,000 that we gave to them this year, and they were going to be requesting another five and five next year. So that'll be ongoing, and when they come to us, I guess, they, they just wanted us to know that that was going to be requested. And I don't think we're going to have that in our budget. It might be one of those things that comes out of the council discretionary, but is that kind of what we were talking about?
I believe so.
I know we talked about it last week, but I didn't think we had a resolution on it.
No, I didn't think we agreed to give out of this.
No decisions have been made.
So, right, and that's not, it's not anything for tonight, but it was just a letter I got, and I wanted to give you the heads up on it, so. So moving on, new business, Parks and Rec facility fee waiver discussion. We did talk about that tonight. For those that didn't tune in or will not get to hear that, we decided to make a rec, kind of a recommendation to the Park Board and get their feedback on that. So we'll be talking about that more coming up in the next months, weeks, or months. Okay, council concerns. I'll start with Councilman Shiverdecker.
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Moore.
I only have one that was brought to my attention from this summer, from up on the top half of Court Street by the Bistro and Exchange Bank and Red Cross, that when groups close off-street, like the car, that the bank says they nice by all the vents down there, but they, they leave and Red Cross open, but they block their way to get into their front parking lot, period. Like the car show had them blocked at eight o'clock in the morning, so people would take consideration, they still open to me. So, one I have.
Is there any kind of solution that, that you've thought of for it?
Only thing, when a group does something up in that, in that direction, remember the bank is open on Saturday from eight to noon.
Right.
And leave at least one way, either on Sixth Street or Court Street to get in and get out off their lot.
Right. I wonder if the, the bank could get a couple cones? I don't know, just a thought. Have them kind of set out before they, they all arrive. I know we do that at times. It might work. We're, we're going to have something happening, but just a suggestion.
I was just bringing it up, so I didn't say it.
Yeah, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Cool. Councilman Braun?
I am good at this point.
Okay. Councilwoman Reclu?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Simmons?
I don't have a concern, but I wanted to give a shout out to both Bill, but especially with Kyle. We had a citizen bring up a concern yesterday. Went out to try to figure out exactly what her problem was, and when I got there, found out Kyle had already been there and had identified the problem and had come up with a solution. He's shaking his head good, so that's good.
He was like, wait a minute.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Kyle. Okay, resolutions. Councilwoman Reclu, if you would present 3356.
And actually, that one's already on the table.
Oh, that's right.
So we'll just need to decide if we have a motion to remove it from the table. So I will let you formally ask if you have a motion to remove it from the table.
I thought we just did that. Okay, does anybody want to take that off the table? Going once?
How do we, just leave it there? What happens if?
Stays there.
Stays there?
If you leave it there, it would die tonight.
Well, let's move on then.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Could I come back to council concerns for just one moment? I, it's not something that, I understand that it's going to die tonight, but it's certainly not something that I would like to see be gone from the table forever and ever. I would certainly like to see it come back up in the very near future, and I would think there's nothing.
Yeah, it just has to be presented in somewhat of a different fashion.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, I just would like to definitely see it come back up to the table, but, or come back as another resolution down the road.
Very good. Okay, hearing no more discussion on that, we'll move on. Councilman Simmons, if you would present Resolution 3357?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3357. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to apply for and sign all necessary documents in relation to the MoDOT Traffic Engineering Assistance Program grant for the development of an ADA transition plan, and contingent upon receiving said grant monies, approving the city's monetary match. I make a recommendation, we approve Resolution Number 3357 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We want to, yeah, Kyle's coming up.
This is a small grant. Total, it would be an $8,000 award that we would have to match with $2,000. An ADA transition plan is a plan that, that looks at the sidewalks, looks at our facilities, and establishes priorities on sidewalks and, and when the city can get them to ADA standards. So it's a, it's a document that, that's kind of a living document. We are required to have such a document by law. The ADA law does that as well as, as others. So many, though we are required to have it, many towns our size and even larger do not have one, but they're, they're becoming more and more prevalent in grants that we apply for. Like we applied for a TAP grant, which was a grant to fill in the missing gap of sidewalks on Business 54. We were docked, docked some scoring points on that grant because we didn't have an ADA transition plan.
Is this something a consulting engineer would do?
It's a, yes, it's something a consulting engineer would do.
So would the contract with the consulting engineering firm come back to the City Council for approval prior to?
Yes, prior to, and plus, if we were awarded the grant, the acceptance of that grant will come back to you.
So, and this is only to develop a plan, correct?
Develop, yeah, a plan, procedures. It looks, looks at, like I said, our, so, you know, it's looking at parks, looking at this building, you know, this building should be in a better shape than others, but looking at key areas where, you know, because we have a lot of sidewalk in town that's in bad shape. What's, what's our priority? And that's the plan for that amongst, say, our overlay projects, our utility projects. It's trying to, trying to kind of build some cohesiveness with, with other things that we do.
When would you find out if we received award funding?
I should receive that next month.
I'd like to be involved in that a little bit more when that comes through, if we, you know, I really would.
We presented, we presented to at Mid-Missouri Regional Planning Commission on the ADA Transition Plan, so it's, it's competitive. I don't know if we'll get awarded or not. So we'll just have to see.
So, so if it's awarded, just so I can kind of understand it, if it's awarded, then it's an 80/20 split, and do we think for sure that the consulting firm would be around the $10,000 mark, or is that too low?
The, a full, you know, the, the legwork involved in an ADA transition plan, you know, going around surveying the sidewalks and things like that, I do not look for a consultant to do that. What I would look for a consultant to do is, is to give us the base document, work with us on setting priors, priorities and schedules that are acceptable and, and that kind of thing. And we would use internal staff to do the legwork.
And you probably know where most of the areas are already, if not all.
Right.
I would guess.
Because, you know, $10,000 doesn't go very far.
No.
So that would, that would essentially get, give us the base document.
But that looks at buildings and city access streets.
Right.
And then, and then that would have opened us up potentially for more grant money going forward.
Right.
Thank you.
Will they attach any timelines to any of the repairs that, like prioritized highly or?
We would attach, the only timelines that we would attach, and we'd be careful how we do it, because it depends on budgets, is it's, it's basically giving ourselves a timeline, so.
Self-imposed.
It's self-imposed.
Right.
And I would say we would, what we would attempt to do, and what we, what I would suggest that we do was, would be set the framework for our prioritization of what we want to do and use that to, you know, schedule what we do as best as possible. You know, I'd try to be very careful on how we.
As it doesn't, we can't do.
Right.
Wouldn't have the money for.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very good.
Is there anything special on this?
If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, that passes to ordinance. Councilwoman Reclu, if you would give our first read on fifteen sixty?
Yes. Bill number fifteen sixty, in ordinance repealing chapter sixty-two Historical Preservation Fulton City Code and enact a new chapter in their, their form. I make a motion that we adopt Resolution number fifteen sixty at tonight's council meeting.
For first reading, or I'm sorry, for second reading tonight, or next time?
I'm sorry, it's first reading tonight, second reading next week. Sorry, excuse me.
You're fine.
Very good.
We can have a discussion in that?
Do we have a second?
We do not.
Well, I second for discussion.
Now you can.
There we go.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know with any other council person, I was kind of late getting my packet this week, but I went home and I read through this. I would like to make a recommendation to the full council, come back, that we tabled this bill for some greater discussion, cause there's some things in here that just don't jibe with me quite enough.
Okay, so that was a motion and a second to table it tonight, correct, okay.
And there's been just a lot, a lot of meetings and discussion about this. I've attended the last few meetings.
Well, do we still need to talk about it then, or are we?
I think we can, it would still.
I mean, yeah, we have a motion and a second to table it on the floor, so you would really be.
I know I have a lot of concerns about the ordinance. One, it interjects a organization that is supposedly non-binding into the decision-making process of planning and zoning, and a lot of the residents in the city. But it's a requirement that they interject their, in, their information, that kind of bothers me a little bit. I think the whole proposal is supposed to be approved by the state first. And I don't think it's been sent to the state in this form.
And according to the, the commission, they've brought it to the state and they, they've sent it back for adjustments, um, and they were supposed to have called the state back to make sure that they didn't need to send it back, I don't know if that phone call got made.
I, I don't know if the state's approved it.
Right, and I would encourage any of you that have questions about this to attend, maybe attend the next, if you're available, attend the next meeting. And that could clear up a lot of things for you, it did for me anyways.
Well, I just had some concern, but I'll get with you on mine, but, um, for right now, I thought that might be the state doing it.
Okay, absolutely. So we have a motion to table this tonight, is there any more discussion on that? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. So, we won't get too discouraged, it's just, uh, maybe need to learn a little bit more about that. Moving on, we have Bill number fifteen sixty-one, uh, Councilman Braun, if you would present that for us.
Bill number fifteen sixty-one, in ordinance imposing a sales tax for public safety and general revenue purposed at the rate at two and one-half cents pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of section one forty-four dot six hundred through one forty-four dot seven sixty-one of the Missouri statute, providing for the use of the sales tax to replace, reduce, or raise in the same amount as any city's sales tax is repealed, reduced rate, whoa, I'm sorry, I'm reading twice.
No, you're, that's okay, this is extremely long.
I lost track here.
You're right.
Reduce, re- raise, and provide for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city on April seventh of two thousand and twenty. I make a motion to approve Bill Fifteen sixty-one at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, just for clarification, we'll do.
Second, second reading, next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Very good. So this is a use tax, um, that'll bring in revenue, um, mostly for our online companies that are getting a free ride right now. A lot of cities are doing this, we've tried it, um, I think a couple times in the past.
April of two thousand and eighteen was last time.
Very good. This time we're attaching the, are gonna try to attach this tax to funds for the police, fire department, basically our emergency services. And even though we do have a couple of other big decisions on taxes, I think that we're gonna be looking at at the same time, these types of taxes are getting approved in the state when they're presented in this fashion, so.
I am, you know, I put, I put in some of my notes that, you know, the first two hundred thousand would go to public safety, capital expenditures. That was based on information I received from Missouri Municipal League in two thousand and seventeen. I contacted them today, and the number is, is now a little over two hundred and fifty thousand. We could leave that at two hundred thousand for all it goes. But I caught, we have a city managers group and we communicate through email, and I kind of said, or, the question came up, what have other towns done that have gotten it passed? And a very common theme was, we're dedicating a significant portion of it to public safety capital. Citizens know and understand police cars, they know and understand fire trucks and bunker gear and that type of thing. And this would give the police and fire department a committed, a dedicated source of, of revenue going into the future.
I, I think we went through this like a year or two ago.
Yeah.
Um, to try to get the use tax tax passed. I know talking to a lot of people, they had their own idea of what it was. I think if we want to get it passed, we, the city, need to make a concentrated effort to get the information out to the public, to explain what we're trying to do.
I would agree.
Rather than just let it show up on the ballot.
Yes.
Cause everybody's just gonna see it, oh, another tax.
Another tax, yeah.
And especially another tax with three or four other taxes on the same ballot.
I've read through the statute myself, and I'm probably more confused now than I was before I read it. And I don't know the fir-, I mean, I understand it's a substitute for sales tax on, on out-of-state purchases. And I'm not sure how it really all works, I really am not, even after reading the statute. So, is there someone that we could get to help us clarify it?
Sure.
And, and understand it, because the way I read it is, it's one hundred percent self-report.
It is.
That's the way I read it.
And, and.
There's a two thousand dollar exemption.
Per person, per house.
You can buy anything on, online that you want.
Or per person.
And then, once you get to two thousand dollars, you're supposed to, uh, report that you spent over two thousand dollars online. A lot of the businesses in town will hit that two thousand dollar threshold.
And well, and, and that's a question that I, so, is that for supplies that they're buying outside of the city of Fulton, or outside of the state that does not have a sales tax? Is that, is that where it's coming from them?
Right, if you buy something on Amazon, you don't pay sales tax on it, or, you don't, you don't pay city sales tax on it.
Right.
And based on a recent court case called Wayfair, um, you would begin paying, Wayfair, the out-of-state online retail providers would be required to collect local sales tax and submit it.
So because, and, and, and you mentioned Amazon, because Amazon has a location in the state of Missouri, and when you put your address in, is that not billing sales tax? I, I would have to look at sometime when I order something from Amazon, but I, I was thinking that it was coming on as sales tax.
I don't know.
Because they have a location in Missouri now.
I don't know.
I, well, I.
I don't know that.
I don't either.
If they have a location in Missouri, I think you're probably paying sales tax for wherever that building is.
No.
I think it only pertains to merchandise that actually comes through that building.
Right, right.
So, any vendor that's from Amazon that doesn't have a facility in the state of Missouri, you don't pay sales tax on it. And the use tax is supposed to help eliminate that.
Maybe we could try to get Stewart to come back, I think, I think a couple years ago, if I remember correctly, we had Stewart from MML come do a little presentation, and that, it doesn't make it perfectly clear, cause it is kind of a confusing topic, but that might help us all refresh our.
So if you would like to pass it for second read, we'll see if we can get Stewart here, Stewart or somebody here for the next meeting.
Right.
So this would be for the April?
Yes.
Okay.
And the reason we chose April, because it's already municipal election, we're already paying ten thousand dollars for that to be on the ballot. This, having another question is almost spring.
Very good. Is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? We'll learn more next time.
To be continued.
Okay, moving on, Councilman Braun, if you would present fifteen sixty-two, then where are you at tonight?
That's okay, Bill fifteen sixty-two, in ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute a, an agreement with County of Callaway, Missouri for public emergency communication operations services for the city of Fulton for the year two thousand and twenty. I make a motion to place Bill fifteen sixty-two for second reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
Did that, did that price go up at all, Bill?
Um, I'm showing it being the exact same number, but I, I think there was a slight change.
How many years left on this particular contract?
Well, there, this is a one-year agreement, they're gonna try and get it to two. Their goal's to get it to a two-year, it was a two-year, some reason it went back to a one-year, and they wanted to get it back to a two, just so that they didn't have to go through the politics of having it get approved every year.
Very good. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, pass it to second read, Councilman Shiverdicker, if you would present fifteen sixty-three?
Yes, sir, Bill number fifteen sixty-three, in ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the city of, for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand and twenty, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. I make a motion to advance Bill fifteen sixty-three for second reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. The council did meet last week, had a pretty lengthy discussion about this, budget, a few decisions were made to adjust a few things.
And I have some, I'm gonna ask Michelle to come to the podium. I have, at, one of the council concerns was part-time salaries. She's, she's done a couple of spreadsheets, just that your, your definition of a part-time employee is going to be very important in determining the amount of cost, taking them up to a, the starting wage of a full-timer is going to be. Go ahead.
So I think Bill sent out the email with the part-time employees that are year-round. So you all have those numbers, keep in mind, it is a guesstimate, it completely varies. And I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, Michelle, let's, did we?
I don't think, I didn't send it out.
Oh.
Well, you sent an email.
I sent out a question.
He just sent a question.
Oh, okay.
Like the difference between part-time and seasonal?
Part-time, full, yeah, part-time.
I'm so sorry, I didn't notice that.
I got, I was looking at your email and I was like, but this, it's a huge difference on what we want to count as part-time versus seasonal.
Right.
And the question I asked the city council was, are golf course employees part-time, or are they seasonal? Cause depending on how you classify golf courses, I believe they were.
Right, roughly.
It could be an increase in cost, the bottom line of the golf course is about eighty thousand dollars.
Again, that's a guesstimate, and I just want to make sure you all know, too, that doesn't count seasonal employees. All, all seasonal employees that aren't at minimum wage will be going to minimum wage January first, an eighty-five cent raise roughly.
Say, say that again, please?
So the new minimum wage, uh, beginning January first is nine forty-five.
Right.
What we typically start out temporary seasonal help is eight sixty, or the current minimum wage, so that is not in our budget right now, that's an eighty-five cent per employee, per hour raise, they're going to get January first.
So is, is there a difference between seasonal and part-time?
Yes, there are part-time employees that work for us year-round at the golf course. And their hours vary, some work, you know, several days a week, some work a few days a week here and there. Uh, we have some retirees, we have some college kids, we have some high school kids, um, so it completely varies. Um, and then we have seasonal employees, um, usually work mostly during the summer, but for example, we have one cemetery employee that works for us about eight months out of the year. So, um, it, it varies also.
So that kind of falls in, yeah.
And, but at the golf course, there's, I, I did look at the list before I sent out the question, and like, wow. We have, um, vast majority of the, of the, of those employees work less than a hundred hours a season. And I think it was up, you know, I think I used three-quarters work less than three hundred hours a season. And a lot of that is personal choice on the part of the employee, they choose not to schedule themselves any more than that. As Michelle said, a lot of the part-time employees we have at the golf course are retired, and they are income restricted on to how much income they can earn before it starts affecting some of their issues, so if we, it is up to you guys.
Give them a raise, you're gonna use them less.
Right, if we, if we raise the pay, we're gonna get, we'll get less hours out of them. Before they hit, hit their, hit their threshold and say, I'm done, I'm not coming back this year, call me next spring.
So do we pay seasonal employees different than part-time employees?
Part-time employees, uh, are generally eligible for a raise, it's usually, um, it, it varies.
Some number.
Depends on their length of service and everything, but they're usually eligible for some kind of raise.
Okay.
But.
Seasonal employees usually don't get a raise unless they're, um, some seasonal employees come back and work for us every year, and we'll bump them up a little bit every year, but, yeah.
But we historically have not given the part-time employees a raise when everybody else in the city has gotten one, is that correct?
Um, I would say that varies, uh, long-term part-time employees, a lot of times do get a little bit of a raise. It's not usually what full-time employees get, it's usually a little bump, but it, it does vary.
Michelle and I talked earlier today, like, at the golf course, and I guess, you know, Clay's back here if he wants to disagree or anything, but we, we don't have any trouble hiring, getting, getting college kids to fill some of those hours, getting high school kids to fill some of those hours, getting the retired people to, to come in and, and work some hours, so it's, it's not a hiring issue. So it's, it's not a hiring issue or availability issue.
Now, I heard you say the, the mandatory minimum raise is not in our budget for next year at this point?
I do not see it in the CWB, so I don't believe it's in there. But it, it's an expense that we look at every January first. We usually have to give everyone a-
I don't, I don't think we talked about a pay raise in the budget meeting for part-time people.
We did not. We did not.
Do, do we need to look at that?
I don't think we usually do because it's, it, the hours vary so much. I don't think we usually do.
Hard to know.
Right.
Okay.
There is a, there is a line in the budget for part-time salaries in each, each of the departments that have it.
Well, I think that the part-time employees should certainly get what a, a full-time employee gets increase-wise. Just my opinion. I, I don't think that it's right to not do that. I, I know when we talked, when we talked about pay increases for people, that, that was only the full-time employees. And, and I know last year, we didn't mention anything about the part-time employees. And until Mr. Stone brought it up this year, well, what about the part-time employees? That, that never has, never crossed my mind. But I certainly think that an increase for, for them should be, should be given as well. Because without them, we don't function as well. Am I correct by that, at the golf course, Clay? Or wherever they might be? Because they're not just at the golf course, correct?
Predominantly golf course and parks.
So they're all yours.
I, I, I don't know the, I guess I don't really understand the definition of part-time and seasonal, because I haven't been involved in the discussions, but I'm thinking there wouldn't be, if the minimum wage is going up next year, probably wouldn't be a need for a raise, because they're going to go up. Am I correct in saying that?
Eighty-five cents an hour.
Yeah.
For the, for the seasonal, I, I would understand that, but if we have an employee that's been a part-time employee for five years, for two years, and we haven't given them any increase?
I think Michelle said they did give increases.
I typically, I typically try, if I remember. I mean, it's, it's hard to remember because they're, we don't terminate them or anything like that. I typically try to give maybe a nickel, a dime. Not a big ones, but when we come back year after year, they get a little bump in, in pay for coming back. But it's not big, it's not.
Bill, could we see the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
And, and I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm going to get something, but yeah, if we could see that, I think that would be a-
Do we make copies or email it, or?
We'll, we'll email it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Clay and the deck. Come on up. The question was asked, if we put money in the budget for a deck at the golf course, would it be able to pay for itself in two years? And Clay responded to me and I'm going to have him respond to you.
I, I don't think you can measure what it would bring in in revenue. I don't think there's an exact number. I do think it would increase the amount of people that stay around after a round of golf and, and buy extra beer or spend money on food. Since we got rid of the bushes and, and made that more of a more comfortable area on the back deck, we're seeing a lot more people sit out there and, and socialize and spend time out there. So I, I think it would be a good improvement to the golf course. I think it would, it would make the clubhouse nicer. We probably, as I told Bill, we probably, we have one of the nic- nicest golf courses in mid-Missouri, but we probably have one of the worst clubhouses. And it's just because it's, it's small, it's, it's starting to age. It's kind of like the restrooms. It's, restrooms aren't going to generate more revenue, but they're sure, they're nicer. People are not complaining about them. We don't have the odor coming out of there like we had before, so it, it would just be something that would improve the overall atmosphere at the course.
We do have a, a very good golf course, and I do agree. I, personally, I think the deck would be an asset. I do believe it would, in my opinion.
I think by adding the deck, it would give people the opportunity, like you were just saying, that they could stick around more and, and maybe drink a couple more beers or whatever, instead of packing up and leaving. They've got a place where they can sit and relax after their golf game and have some conversation. Whereas, right now, I'm not sure we have a good spot for that at, at the clubhouse, so.
What was the estimated price tag on that?
With the brick wall, but the council didn't want the brick wall.
I don't, I don't even remember.
It was twenty-eight thousand.
It would probably be all of that, based on-
But without the brick wall, probably fifteen?
I don't know. I mean, with the way things have been coming in and some of the prices we're getting, it may be forty thousand. I, to be honest, I-
Is this covered, is this covered, Bill?
No.
No, I don't know.
Would it cover the existing patio?
It, it would extend out from the existing patio, down the hillside. We, I think we'd get, we'd get by without a brick wall. That was just kind of a, a way to break up the, from going to the concrete to the deck, maybe give people a place to sit, but we, we don't necessarily have to have it. I think that idea came about when we had some of the prisoners to, to do some of the brickwork.
Yeah, I think so.
And we don't have that anymore.
Clay, did we get something maybe a little more firm on what you want to put out there and how much?
Yeah, but we, we have a design. I mean, we'll just have to get an est, a better estimate on it.
Okay.
But I, I think, I think that's probably pretty close, even, even without the bricks.
Well, your golf is socializing. That's what you do. That's what golf games all about. So, you know, yeah, you're getting ready to go home and it's like, oh, hey, let's sit there and have another beer, talk, talk about our game or something. And I think it would, I think it would help, as far as revenue, I really do.
Where would that money come from?
Well, since how the general, the golf fund is already twenty, thirty-eight thousand in the hole? It would make it sixty-six thousand in the hole.
Fourteen thousand versus forty thousand is a big deal.
Which would just then come off that bottom.
A hundred thousand more?
Huh?
That bad bottom line already?
It's going to come off the ninety-four thousand.
I think if we're looking at fourteen thousand or we're looking at forty thousand or whatever number we're looking at, we need to know that number. Because fourteen to forty is a big difference.
I think we're looking at somewhere close to twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
How big is this deck?
I, I don't know the dimensions off the top of my head, but it would, it would extend from basically the stairway over to, if you drew a line out from that small mini shelter.
So like twenty by thirty or something?
Thirty by forty, twenty by thirty, something in that, yeah. Like I said, it's been a while since I've looked at the, the layout and design.
I don't know how far out you were looking at extending the, yeah.
Probably, you probably, probably wouldn't go past the asphalt. We'd probably stop short of the asphalt where the carts.
Oh, wow. That's a big deck.
I don't know what that is, forty feet.
I mean, it probably wouldn't go that far out, but it would, it would go that direction, pretty close to it.
All the way down, all the way down to the carts?
Close to it.
That's a big deck.
I, I don't know the exact dimension from that.
Oh, my God.
There is a drawing.
Yeah, we're, we're talking expensive.
Clay, what's, what's the average cost of a beverage?
About, about three dollars, out there. So I guess you'd have to sell nine thousand more. Nine thousand more to, to make it, make it pay for itself.
John's got that.
I'll tell you what, it's a-
I think it's definitely possible in two years, though.
Well, that's a hundred and, and I figured it on thirty-nine weeks, okay? If, and, and I used fifteen thousand a year. So a thirty-thousand-dollar deck comes up to three hundred and eighty-four dollars a week in thirty-nine weeks. Because, let's face it, I'm not going to sit out there in the middle of the winter.
No, no.
Oh, no.
So could, do you think it's possible to do a hundred, a hundred and thirty extra beverages in a week for that to happen?
I, I think it is. Now, can I attribute all that to there being a deck there? I don't know. But I, I think the manager we have right now, he's doing a good job. He's, he's bringing in some outstanding revenue numbers.
I think so, too.
Like I said, we hope that continues next year.
But I mean, that's, that's a simple way to look at it. If you're looking, can it pay for itself in two years? We need a hundred and twenty-eight more beverages.
There's, there's going to be a lot of hours during the summer, it's not going to be usable as well.
That's true.
But that's a hundred and twenty-eight in a week. For, you, you need three hundred and eighty-four dollars a week for thirty-nine weeks to pay, to get to the fifteen thousand.
All right, and I think where you're going to see a lot of-
Beverages, you could also count food or other things.
I think where you see a lot of revenue increases is when you have a hundred to a hundred twenty people there for a tournament. And instead of, at five o'clock when the tournament's over, instead of having, having them crammed under that shelter. They can sit out on the deck, relax, hang out with their friends. Again, it's, it's just something to make the, the clubhouse nicer and-
Or appear nicer, anyway.
Appear nicer, yeah.
I like the idea.
We got, we got lots of ideas, just not enough money.
Always.
Yeah.
So come up with a drawing and the cost estimate for next council meeting.
Okay, we have, we have that, so we have.
And include, I guess, tables and chairs and umbrellas? Would that be appropriate?
No, we, we'd probably add that as we go, a little bit at a time. We got some tables we can move out there now. So we got some more decorative type tables we can move out there. So we, we can include that as an estimate, too.
Could we get some spools from the warehouse that have wire on them and put them out there?
I was going to say, is there some project, the scouts can be building something for us?
Well, some of your alcohol vendors can help you with umbrellas and stuff, too.
Yes, advertising, that's correct.
Okay.
Very good.
Next one, who, the council asked for information on a bucket truck versus a ladder truck for the fire department. So if you, you guys want to come up?
Split the difference.
Darrell and I met today for a couple hours, discussed, you know, we both feel both trucks are needed and replaced right away. On how to fund that. So our last option, we called Bill in and just had him listen to what we had to present. So we decided that maybe we could take a hundred and fifty thousand out of our reserve fund. And when our use tax started coming in, we would replace that back into the reserve fund.
That's kind of where we ended up. We kind of talked to each other about what the function of each truck was, the shape of the trucks. You know, that, that utility truck, you know, it's got seventy-eight hundred hours on it. If you, if you take that into a mileage equivalent using sixty mile an hour, it's got over four hundred thousand miles on the gear. It, right now, it, it hesitates when you grab the stick to move the bucket to the spot. And then we purge the air out and that works for a while and then it hesitates again. He's got issues with his truck. So kind of what we came up with was, we had the money for the bucket trucks in the budget. It was approved by the U Board to be taken into you all to accept that budget. So we needed to find money for his truck. And he believes he's got one found in, in another town, that we still need to go look at it, have the mechanics go look at it, make sure it's a good truck. But Kevin feels like right now that that probably wouldn't be too good.
Clay, how old's the truck?
Yeah, what do you think?
It's a two thousand and three. Our, our current one is nineteen ninety. We bought it about fifteen years ago from Columbia Fire. And this is where we're looking at one again, Columbia Fire. Our current trucks will be thirty years old next year. And the last few fires, it's, it's failed us. It has, it has open jump seats on it, the firefighters ride basically outside in the elements on this truck. And the new truck will be enclosed, cabs. Just, trucks are starting to fail us and I'm, it's, it's getting to be a pretty big concern for me.
We've kind of done this once before. Somebody on the council department, remember, raised a water tank? Now here, I was looking forward.
Yeah.
The water department didn't have the money. They brought it from the electric reserves and they're paying that back monthly with some interest on it. It was, it was kind of a happy medium, the, whatever the interest, the reserve was earning wasn't very much. The, the water department borrowed the money, it was going to be X amount, so we just kind of picked a happy medium in between the two, where the water department came out good and the electric department came out a little better than they did. So that worked for that. Here it actually kind of worked for this. Now, we've got hopefully a, a stream of revenue to come back and repay that for some.
So this, this new used truck?
Yeah.
Is it, are you saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes, it's a hundred and fifty thousand. To replace the, for a new one would be one point two million.
Right, yeah.
I do have some information on that.
Yeah, do you? I think those miles and stuff, I, yeah.
It's got eighty-four thousand.
Eight?
And what tires have on it?
I'm not sure our odometer is still working on it.
Okay.
Kevin?
Good, no worries.
Kevin, what would, what would our existing truck? What do you feel that we could give for our existing truck? Do we have both, I mean, really, both of you?
I'm, I'm thinking we could get around thirty thousand out of our truck that we have right now.
You said you haven't had a chance to look at the, the new truck or the, the used truck?
Columbia's truck.
I have not went over and looked at it yet. They said we can go over and look at it or most likely they would bring it over for us and display it for us at a council meeting, next council meeting.
I, I'm just wondering, is there any cost that we're going to have to incur to, to refurbish it or anything?
No, I have no plans to refurbish it, only changing some lettering on it.
Yeah.
And I think we could put that truck right in service.
When was the last time it was checked out? When was the last time it was certified?
They certify it annually, same as us.
Then you talk to the, the people over there and ask them about the truck.
I've, I've talked to the assistant chief and he's, he feels pretty confident that we could get ten years out of it in our community.
So why are they getting rid of it?
They, they replaced it with a new truck.
They spent one point two million.
You got the revenue, yeah. Of course.
This was actually a replacement for the one you got now.
That's correct, yeah. So this truck replaced the one that we have-
That we have now.
Well, it sounds like that's a good plan.
How do you feel about this, Bill? This option?
As a, as a loan from the utilities contingent upon the sales tax passing, I think that's also going to give some incentive to the fire department to assist in the passage of the sales tax.
But if the use tax doesn't pass?
Darrell's out. Darrell's aware of that.
But we saw also as this use tax, you know, it's going to take a little while to get monies, you know, built up to buy something like a fire truck.
Of course.
This might be a good way to do some of that stuff. In case Steve needs something, you know, and then you need, the money's not quite there yet, we might use the same type of arrangement to front-load some money towards something and be repaid back later, if this tax passes.
So this is a four-person in- So this is a four-person enclosed cab?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I think we oughta go ahead and, and pursue the option.
I think so too.
Yeah, take a look at it, yeah, definitely.
Go ahead and, and check out the truck to see if it's viable, see if it's worth doing this or not.
Yeah.
I agree.
See what, yeah, see what it's like.
I mean, if...
Would, would someone care to put that in the form of a motion?
I make that a motion.
Second.
Second, okay.
And then we'll come back, and it's gonna require the tr- Kathy, help me out here. The motion includes the transferring of funds necessary to purchase the truck with a repayment schedule contingent upon the sales tax passing.
Use tax pass.
Am I missing anything? And you would like to maybe have it? Well, we'll see when they can bring it over for an inspection, we'll let the council know when it'll be in town.
Sounds good, I appreciate it.
Utilities would like to be paid back first, you know, before...
Yes, the, the utilities will get the first hundred and fifty thousand from the use tax that would be designated for the fire department. Gotcha.
Thank you, guys.
For this year. For the first year, right?
Or until it's paid.
Should be.
Until it's paid, yeah.
Until it's paid back.
Yes, but, but, but not ongoing, we're gonna leave it to the public safety sector, with the exception of this particular purchase.
Well, this, this is a...
It's a loan?
An advance.
Yes, yes.
For public safety. We're gonna replace the fire truck now, cause it needs to be replaced.
Correct.
And...
And if, and if the use tax passes, instead of Kevin spending his hundred and thirty thousand...
He's not getting another hundred and thirty or fifty thousand.
It'll, it'll go to, it'll go to repay Daryl back.
Right.
For the first year.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for working together.
Thank you, guys.
Awesome, I bet.
Um, chamber dollars. You wanna wait until the contract comes before you, or do you wanna discuss that more this evening?
The contract should be coming, contract should be coming the first, um, meeting of November, if everything stays as planned.
And we won't have the budget finished by then, so...
That should be the meeting that it is finished. But just because the budget's done, doesn't mean you...
Well, we can amend it, that, before we read it that final time.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we'll bring that up before we read this, so...
Okay. Okay.
Let's wait.
And, uh, Callaway two hundred, if, if you decide to fund that next year, would come out of the city council contingency? It's the spot.
Do we have dollars left? Do we have dollars left in that this year?
That was, sorry, that was...
Is there dollars left in that this year? What have we spent out of that discretionary fund?
I don't know, I'll stop me there.
At this point? Okay.
Yeah, it's getting low.
I think we can...
All right.
I, I mean, I have some concerns about it myself with other, with other cities, what they've done and haven't done, but...
That's all the notes that I had from the meeting. Um, as a handout this evening, you received the, some new sheets. These are the only sheets, to the best of my belief, that changed, um, from the copy you received last week until this evening. It includes the changes that were approved by the, and kinda directed by the city council at the retreat last Thursday. Is there, are there other questions on the budget and/or is there anything else you would like to discuss?
The only other thing, Bill, and, and I know that I asked the question, and you did hand me the emails on, and I know many others looked at that email on the comprehensive plan for the city. Is there, is there a desire by anybody else to try to work towards putting a comprehensive plan together for the city, because of the age of the current one we're working on, or that, that's out there?
I think at this time, we've got our plate pretty full. I'm wondering, could we look at that?
I, I think there's a desire, but...
Oh yeah, there's a desire, but... We've got a lot on our plate right now. I don't know if it's the right time to approach it.
What was our sort of spitball estimate of what the cost?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
About a hundred thousand.
Um, if, if we don't have it, the hundred thousand next year, we're definitely not gonna have it the year after that, right?
Right.
The further we get into this...
Yeah.
The nine million dollar project, the...
Right.
Less money that we're gonna have available.
But, I don't agree with that, but if the use tax passes, we might find...
We might be able to free up some money on that?
Yes.
Other than the two hundred that's going to public safety?
Right.
Public safety, yeah.
Sort of pay for some of the stuff we're paying for now, out of that, okay?
Yeah, I'm looking at that as being some of the... Kush.
And, and I'm good with whatever anybody else decides, okay? But I think that it's something that we definitely need to try to figure out, because if I understand it correctly after sitting in that session, some of the very first things that should happen with the comprehensive plan, when anything goes to planning and zoning, planning and zoning should ask for that comprehensive plan. And none of that's happened.
I know.
You know, what we're working on is, I'm sorry, don't, there's, there was two different, there was a master plan and then the other one. One was a nineteen ninety-three and then one was a two thousand, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And that's a long time.
Still younger than our fire truck.
I agree with John.
You're right. You're right.
So I, I agree with John that we need to have a plan, a vision statement, that's kind of up to date, and, but, maybe not right this minute. So, before we continue on...
Yes, sir.
The papers you handed us...
Yes, sir.
The very first page, front and back. You have total general and enterprise funds, ninety-four thousand and change.
All right.
And the second page, you have budgeted grand total, a hundred and sixteen. I'm confused. What's the hundred and sixteen thousand?
The hundred and sixteen takes into consideration the, uh, excess revenues and the police forfeitures, the municipal garage fund, and the health insurance fund.
So, so is the actual final revenue exceeding budget number a hundred and sixteen, or is it ninety-four?
A hundred and sixteen.
Okay, so it's a hundred. It's a hundred, essentially.
Now, now I'm gonna be some, gonna, the, the only number that we have much control over on this page two, on the back sheet, is the municipal garage and the internal service funds. The other numbers, we don't have a lot of, it's, uh, the, the top service, the debt service funds, that's, that's done. We, we, it's not, it's not adjustable. The South Business Fifty-four TIF, it's gonna be adjustable to the extent of the revenue that comes in, we will, whatever revenue comes in, we will spend out.
Right.
Okay? Uh, the police forfeitures is what it says, the health insurance, um, we are going to... I don't wanna say it's a, it's a swag, but I will say, if we have a good year, we will exceed that fifteen thousand dollar gain. If we have a bad year, we will exceed that fifteen thousand dollar gain. It'll be much worse than that.
Gotcha.
We just, we don't know what the health insurance claims are gonna be next year. We know what the premiums are gonna be, we know what the, a lot of the fixed costs are gonna be, we just don't know what the claims are gonna be. And we can literally have one claim... Cost you a lot of money. Do we have any lasers? How many lasers we got? We have, we have one laser that the insurance co- huh? That the insurance company says, we're not gonna give you the standard deductible on that one, we're gonna raise that up to a hundred and fifteen?
A hundred and fifteen?
A hundred and fifteen thousand.
Thousand.
The city of Fulton is, will be responsible for the first hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in cost.
Kinda messes up the fifteen thousand dollar number.
It does.
Okay.
It does. Are there any other questions? What can we do in the public hearing next meeting?
Yep, public hearing will be at six-thirty at the next meeting.
Very good. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Oppose, no? All right, Bill fifteen sixty-three passes to third reading.
Second. Second reading.
To second reading, yes. Okay, moving on to second reads. Councilman Simmons, if you would, uh, present Bill fifteen fifty-nine?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen fifty-nine, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash thirty-three amendments Fulton City Code by amending the automatic sprinkler system requirement set forth in section nine oh three dash two point one point two, group alpha dash two of the two thousand fifteen international building code. I make a recommendation, we advance this bill to the third reading and final reading for tonight.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second. I think everyone was here, um, when this was presented to us. Is there any questions or discussion on this?
No, but I feel like Dennis is getting away really easy tonight.
Yeah. So, yeah, if there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Okay, if you would read it for third reading?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen fifty-nine, an ordinance amending section eighteen dash thirty-three amendments Fulton City Code by amending the automatic sprinkler system requirement set forth in section nine oh three point two point one point two, group alpha dash two of the two thousand fifteen international building code. I make a recommendation, we approve the third reading and advance the final reading tonight.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Very good. You've heard the bill read three times, this time I just need to ask for a roll call for the final, uh, vote.
Okay, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Schuberdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Five council members, affirmative, three absent.
Very good, Bill fifteen fifty-nine passes. Announcements, uh, next meeting will be held Tuesday, October twenty-second, six-thirty. The city of Marshall will host the MML Central, Central Division Meeting on Wednesday, October sixteenth.